I would say Beach got our chief building official. Why would he leave such a clamorous job as such?
Please rise for the pleasure of the evening.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will call Alden Bochart, if that's in. Alden Ravencraft.
Here.
Alvin Covert.
Here.
Alden Bell.
Here.
Alden Wilson is absent. And Alden Lewis.
Here.
At this time we have a forum, so we'll call it by順序的order. Can I give a motion to approve of July 2nd, 2024 meeting minutes, please? Alden Covert, can I have a second?
Second.
By Alden Bell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I give a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
By Alden Bell. Can I have a second, please? Alden Lewis. Special items, we have none. Appointments to boards and committees, look, all in favor, sorry.
Aye.
Aye.
Special items, none. Appointments to boards and commissions, we have none. Scheduled public comments, none. Just a reminder, any pub comments maybe into the city clerk by Wednesday, or the meeting night, before the meeting date. Public care, none. Move on to introductions and first readings. Council bill number 2024-23, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into the Boone County, Missouri Road and Bridge Asset Transfer Co-op Agreement.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, for this evening is consideration for authorization to proceed with purchase of the 2013 Freightliner dump truck from Boone County Road and Bridge. This was one of the items that was approved in the budget back in April for FY25, a budget of $50,000 allocated. The staff at Boone County Road and Bridge have agreed to sell this truck along with the snow removal equipment that's attached, snow plow, material spreader and stand, to the city of Ashland for $28,000. The agreement's been reviewed by staff and city attorney. We've had an independent inspection of the truck completed by, it says Columbia Freightliner in my memo, I wasn't aware that they changed their name to freight truck group of Y70. Only two issues were discovered during that inspection, and they were just minor maintenance issues, a fan belt and a oil pressure sensor needs replaced. This truck will be replacing the 1994 F-800, that's the type of one I quoted in the memo, it's a Ford F-800 dump truck that we currently have in City Fleet, which will later be liquidated in accordance with the city policy. Purchase of this vehicle will increase the efficiency of the Streets Division day-to-day operations and snow removal operations.
Any questions for James?
One point that I would like to add is, we will need to utilize part of those remaining funds to paint the truck. It's bright red, and we certainly don't want to have people confused with why Boone County Road and Bridge would be in town doing maintenance planning.
Is this his last big purchase this year?
Not even close. There's more, a lot more.
Not even the last one. Oh, wow. All right, can I have a motion approving council bill number 2024-23, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into the Boone County, Missouri Road and Bridge Asset Transfer Co-op Agreement? Mr. Lewis, can I have a second?
Second.
Alden Covert? Alden Ravencraft? Alden Covert?
Aye.
Alden Bell?
Aye.
Alden Lewis?
Aye.
Council bill number 2024-24, an ordinance approving the zoning of 300 South Henry Clay Boulevard.
All right, this is regarding a request by Eric West Hughes of West Hughes Architecture LLC on behalf of HCR Enterprises for the rezoning of approximately 4.38 acres at 300 South Henry Clay Boulevard. The subject property, both which the design professional and owner are here, if you have any questions. The subject property is approximately 4.38 acres. This parcel is on the east side of South Henry Clay Boulevard, midway between East Johnson Avenue and Sarah Drive. Current zoning classification is R1, single-family. Proposed zoning classification is R3, multifamily. Earlier this year, city staff met with Matt Haake with HCR Enterprises about potential purchase of the Ashland Healthcare Building. At the time, the building was up for auction. He has since completed the purchase and has a desire to convert the existing building into approximately 28 mostly one-bedroom apartments. It's been granted approval to do some demo work and partial remodel. He was told that approval of the rezoning was not guaranteed, yet staff sympathizes that rezoning is a process, and this would give the owners time to remove what is in the building and work out a more detailed plan for the overall remodel. The main concern for the Southern Boone Fire Department is the condition of the existing sprinkler system. This is currently being worked out between the two parties. There is currently a lack of this type of housing in Ashland, and the desire has been expressed as such. Though the future land use map anticipated this property to be commercial, it is more cost-effective to renovate the existing long-term care facility into dwelling units. Site is to remain virtually unchanged with the exception of repairing and striping the existing parking lot while potentially adding a few new parking spaces. The owners and their design professional are aware of the requirements of Section 9.365.1, parking spaces required, which in the old code requires two spaces per dwelling unit. But after further investigation, it was discovered that the new code, according to Table 9-11.2 for multifamily dwellings, only one space is required per dwelling unit. So after careful consideration, staff is supportive of this rezoning, as this property is of a similar type as what existed previously. Existing zoning is R1, which was in conflict with the future land use map, or future land use. It is the opinion of staff that the R3 would be better suited for the site than the current R1 zoning, as it makes use of an otherwise empty structure. The only questions raised have been about the type of residents that this project is intended to attract. This was unanimously approved for recommendation by the Planning and Zoning Commission at the July 9th meeting.
Could you go into detail on what the questions were at the meeting as far as what kind of tenants?
So they were concerns about the types of tenants, maybe attracting undesirable tenants or, say, younger types of tenants that would be loud at night. But then it was explained further that they, I guess it was a resident that lived to the east, in the subdivision to the east of the current facility, and they were concerned that maybe people would be having parties in the backyard that would back up their yard, but there's quite a slope in the back, and there's no real exit or patio back there. And they don't intend to put one at this time, so I think his concerns were put at ease.
So it's not going to be dedicated to seniors and such as that? Just anyone that has the money to pay the rent?
Well, if the owner appreciates, of course.
Okay.
Boy, if there were enough seniors down here that would build that place, we would consider that. We like seniors.
So do I.
Yeah.
Before, I'm not far from it either. Before we bought the place, I walked the neighborhood and introduced myself to see people, just to kind of check the temperature and all that, and I ran into two ladies that would say, "I wish you were here a year ago before I bought my house," because I wouldn't like a single-story, single-level with maintenance-free place that I didn't check me up on buying a house down here. So, yeah, and we haven't had enough time to do.
Haven't got that far.
Yeah, my name's Matt, by the way. I'm from Columbia, one of the two owners of the building. And, yeah, we just, this has come on pretty quick, the whole purchase and everything, so, boy, yeah, there was a market for 26, the number's really 26, not 28. And I don't think we, every time we do it, I don't think it's, I don't think it's going to get, I don't think you can get any more than that. If it did, it might be 28, but we're struggling to get 26 right now. Not struggling, we're just still working on 26. Yes, if we could get 26 seniors that can fill that place up in a timely manner, that would be wonderful. And one thing we're not going to do is do Section 8 or anything like that. We, I have a bunch of properties in Columbia, I've done some Section 8 in the past, I've been doing this for 25 years. Section 8 is great, it can be great if you know how to manage them. You just, but, yeah, we have no desire for that down here. If we did that down here, we would, it would be, probably be a pretty deep proposition at best. We're after people with money.
Well, are we all?
Yeah.
Finding one.
So we're still trying to, we're still trying to figure out what the price point is going to be, but it's probably going to be, with the way we're going to finish it out, it's probably going to be on the upper end of what this market can support for a single, for one bedroom. There's going to be three two-bedrooms and two studios, is how it's shaping up right now. But, yeah, we're going to be on the, we're going to be on the upper end of that, and so we'll see.
Are the units going to be furnished?
They are not. They're going to be, what happened is, what we're doing is, there's basically 60 patient rooms in there. We're knocking down a wall, each of those have had a bathroom in it, and a sink, but no kitchen, no kitchen. So we're knocking, we're taking out, putting two patient rooms into one, tearing, breaking out half of the, half of the wall that separated those units, tearing out one of the bathrooms, and then putting a kitchen in there. So it's going to be a kitchen with a full bath, shower, stove, microwave, refrigerator, and all that stuff will be brand-new, the appliances will be brand-new. All new paint, all new flooring. Should be pretty nice.
How much are smallest and then largest?
Spur footage? 400, 4AE, I would say, roughly, spur feet. Yeah, they're pretty small. But it'd be, and so, most of them are going to be very similar. 16 to 18 are going to be basically the exact same unit, the way the floors layout. But then, because there was the center, center bit of that building, if you've ever been in there, the front, the front wing is a different shape, so there will be some differences.
Will there be a property manager on-site?
Uh, I don't, probably not a full-time property manager, it's only 26 units. Tried to get my daughter, who's 28, and looking for housing in Ashland, because she's married and just a city boy, and it would have been ideal, but they were impatient, had a hard time finding anything in this town for under $1,300 a month. And, yeah, their time, our time schedules just didn't match up perfectly. My other daughter's getting a human design, we thought about doing assisted living back when we were brainstorming. This happened so fast, we didn't have time to do any research. We had to decide, do we want to take a chance or not? Even though I stared at that building vacant for two years, because my mother was in the RCF across the street, and I've been in that building for the last 25 years when I was in healthcare, so I just saw a vacant building and wanted to do something with it.
So when would you do your study as far as the pricing?
Well, it was for, to set the pricing, yeah. I mean, we've kind of already been doing it, it's probably going to fall in the, and we're going to include the, all the utilities will be included, it's probably going to fall in the $1,000 to $1,200 a month range without the utilities, and the utilities on that. If you ask me today what our pricing is, I'd tell you it's $1,000 a month plus $200 a month utilities allowance, but that could change a little bit.
So would that be for the studio, the one-bedroom or two-bedroom?
Studios are going to be so cool, they might be more. They're going to be slick.
They have to be.
Yeah.
They could a lot.
And we, and if I not, you know, and what we're being told from the five or so realtors and people in the industry that we've talked to, this might be kind of a redefining of what the housing, pushing the envelope for what this town has and has supported in the past. But we walk in, it's going to be a brand-new slick place.
Any questions?
Does it come with a case of wine a month?
You rent and sign a two-year lease, are you two a case of?
Just don't ask, he asks.
So, and we're not going to do, we're going to, we're going to, we've done this, I've managed properties for a long time, and we, we're not going to let the concern about the partying and things like that. This place is too small, you can't have partying in a building like that. It's going to be a nice controlled environment, that's why we go towards the seniors, because it's just less headaches.
So on another side of the fence, let's talk about this.
Yeah.
You do all the work and you get everything done, and you do your study, and you can't find people to rent it. What's your plan?
Well, we, we will set the price so that we can make our mortgage payments. We're borrowing money to do this, this isn't, we didn't come in and write it, we will be borrowing money to do it, just like we do with every project. You, you see what the market will bear, and if the market doesn't bear it, you adjust accordingly, and we would do that with this project, too.
It kind of sounds like it's going to be like the terrorists in Columbia, or something such as that.
That would be awesome. Yeah.
I mean.
I would like that.
The terrorists is assisted living, but this kind of sounds like the ballpark.
Yeah.
Without the assist.
Yeah, and, you know, we get down here, I'm a resident of Columbia for 40 years, and Terry, my partner's lived there his entire life, and I'm the healthcare background guy, and I have a kid that's coming out of college with a degree towards, that's geared towards seniors. And the thought of doing something for true seniors, and not just the independent living, but moving towards assisted living, maybe we trans, progress towards that at some point. We just didn't have the time to do that. This was an auction, I found out about the auction 10 days before it was going, going up. Yeah, so it was a quick, it was a quick decision.
Yeah, I know, I'm trying to get some more info, but I know Chris's company, they have something very similar down in Jefferson City, and I thought they were a little bit insane to do it at first, but I think it's very similar, it's an assisted living facility, and I'm trying to be, I'm trying to get info on what the price is, but they haven't had any problem finding tenants at all.
Yeah.
And when they first told me the price, I thought it sounded a little high, and the demand has been, exceeded their expectations, and I don't have any reason why it wouldn't be very similar in Ashland.
Yeah, you know, it's a, the building, it's just, you can't build something like that, and with the housing market where it is, and there's just so many places, I mean, look at the houses in Ashland are being built, all these $400,000 houses, it's just staggering. That's, that's what I've, what I've seen the last few months, that's all I see going up, is that right? I don't, I didn't, I have much more. What's that?
That's low.
That's low, okay, yeah, all right, okay, all right.
My understanding for fully furnished units in Jefferson City, they're only between $1,000 and $1,200 a month.
Yeah, so we're going to be right in there, you know, and that's where we want to be, and with those numbers, and what we're going to put into this building, we're going to, it's going to be a 15, 20-year project, that's what we do, we borrow money and pay it off over 15 to 20 years, we take a huge risk. That's the non-glamorous side, you know, when people say, hey, 1,200 bucks a month, they don't know about all those mortgages, 15 to 20 years, never 30, you know, with that risk.
I give a motion approving council bill number 2024-24, an ordinance approving the zoning of 300 South Henry Clay Boulevard. Motion? Mr. Lewis, can I have a second?
Second.
By Alden Bell? Alden Ravencraft?
Aye.
Alden Covert?
Aye.
Alden Bell?
Aye.
And Alden Lewis?
Aye.
It fails? It fails. Thanks, sir.
If we want to revote, when we have more people, can we play that?
So you can have a motion to reconsider, but you had to be in the prevailing party to bring that motion.
Okay.
Or you can bring it up as a brand-new item later. So they can go again? Yeah, but you have to start from the beginning. In this instance, it wouldn't make a big deal, but strictly speaking, it's not a motion to reconsider. You would ask to have it added to the agenda from scratch. And they won't, maybe we'll have to go in front of P and Z again? Does it have to go back to P and Z? No. There were, no fact has changed, the recommendation was unanimous. Right. Yeah. Just, if you wanted to, you could ask to have it added back to, as new business on a new agenda. Moving on, council bill number 2024-25, an ordinance to amend Chapter 20, traffic code Schedule 2, stop signs Liberty Lane in Milton Drive. Staff, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, several months ago, city staff was asked to consider installing additional stop signs at the intersection of East Liberty Lane and Milton Drive. Currently, there is a stop sign on Milton, for traffic on Milton Drive, which would be at southbound towards East Liberty Lane. This has been a problematic intersection over the years, as it is essentially the valley between the two hills and a point of access for US Highway 63, so we have seen higher than, higher than anticipated traffic speeds on occasion. Contracted with Clean and Associates to conduct more of the traffic studies this summer on behalf of the city, this intersection was one of them, and we should have the results of that traffic study and recommendations in your packet. But essentially, of the, the recommendation that came back from the traffic study indicated that the speeds were higher than the posted speed limit of 25 miles per hour. We had, I believe, one that was even picked up at 62 miles per hour, if I remember correctly. The average speed was 27.9 miles per hour, with the 85th percentile recorded speeds was 33 miles per hour. Those details, along with, those details led to the consideration for additional stop signs, meeting the required warrant, and the letter of recommendation from Clean and Associates advised that we install two additional stop signs at this intersection, one for each, the east and westbound lanes of East Liberty Lane, thereby making this a three-way stop intersection. There, the materials needed for this are currently in inventory of our, at Ashland Public Works, so we would not anticipate any additional costs other than replacing that inventory, which would amount to about $200.
In reading through that, the last proposal, I know, because, I mean, the speed is worrying some, I think if you drive that intersection a lot, what's worse is all the renters that are parking on the street, so then you can't see to get out of that intersection safely. I know that those rental units should have parking requirements, right? So, I mean, there are tons of cars, I mean, tons and tons, what are we, is there any way to fix, I mean, the stop sign's going to help a lot.
Sure.
But, I mean, I don't know that it's necessarily the speed, it's the fact that these people have junk in their garage and then four cars on the road.
If I recall correctly, I believe that the site distance, all the site distance concerns fell within the acceptable range. There are options for this area of East Liberty Lane. It has a wide enough right-of-way to allow for the parking on one side of the street that we currently see on the north side. However, that could be addressed if the road designation was changed. That being said, it would really almost have to be designated to a commercial roadway, and I think that we would have some difficulties there, because it's more of a mixed-use, particularly through those few blocks, as it's far more residential on that side than it is commercial. That, but that can change with the development of Liberty Square, where we'll see additional commercial traffic coming and going, particularly, it sounds like we're going to have some delivery vehicles, which is farther east on Liberty Lane than this intersection, but it's certainly going to have some trip-down effects. At this point, I'm not sure what we could do to address the parking.
I mean, the parking is not necessarily resulting in an issue, there's a perception of an issue, but it's not resulting in accidents or anything like that, so I think starting with the stop sign is probably the appropriate first step, if we find ourselves still having potential traffic concerns, we could reevaluate it at that time.
I think the stop sign's definitely going to address it, I guess, are we, I was just wondering, are we sure that the, did they comply with what's required by the code as far as the off-street parking or whatever they need to do?
Yes. It is in compliance. You know, push come to shove, there might be the opportunity to where we could push those parking stalls, delete one parking stall on each side of Milton, and that would open up some more site distance and visibility for vehicles coming at the middle, pulling up to that stop sign on Milton. But as the administrator mentioned, you know, as long as they're abiding by that stop sign, then that should take care of about 90% of the issue.
Yeah, because people are just creeping out because they can't see. Yeah, no, that's helpful, thank you.
Any questions for James? I give a motion approving council bill number 2024-25, an ordinance to amend Chapter 20, traffic code Schedule 2, stop sign Liberty Lane in Milton Drive.
So moved.
Alden Bell, can I have a second? Alden Covert? Alden Lewis?
Aye.
Alden Bell?
Aye.
Alden Covert?
Aye.
And Alden Ravencraft?
Aye.
Council bill number 2024-26, an ordinance designating a one-way street and alley in Chapter 20 of the code of the city of Ashland, Red Bud Lane and North Henry Clay, and Henry Clay Boulevard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the board, as we've discussed multiple times prior, we are at the juncture where we are ready to proceed with passage of an ordinance to complete the conversion of the 100 to 400 blocks of Red Bud Lane from two-way traffic to one-way traffic. Clean and Associates completed a traffic study earlier this year for us, we've discussed that multiple times during previous board of all meetings. Staff has conducted thorough outreach program utilizing press releases, social media, door hangtags, and direct mail. We, earlier this evening, had a public forum, we had one affected party show up, a business owner along this route, who was in support of the conversion. I also received an email last week from one of the residents in the 400 block of Red Bud Lane advising they were in support of the conversion. I've not received any official reports that people were not in support of it, other than a few grumblings in the ribbon mill. At this point, the, this conversion will need to be completed via ordinance, which, after the second reading, which we anticipate being scheduled for the next meeting on August 6th, staff will complete the conversion on the following day, August 7th, at noon, this would be the official opening. I've been in discussions with Police Chief Young regarding what the enforcement methods and levels will be, I'll leave to him to speak to that further if you so desire to hear from him. As the city attorney had explained last time, we don't have a choice. I mean, with completion of this traffic study, we are now on the clock, so to speak, to make some type of improvement.
Did we need to put out mailers and stuff?
Yes, sir, they all went out on the, well, and I've received positive feedback from some people about getting those mailers and door, door hangers.
Any questions for James? Or any questions for Chief Young? I give a motion to approve council bill number 2024-26, an ordinance designating one-way street and alley in Chapter 20, Chapter 20 of our code of the city of Ashland, Red Bud Lane and Henry Clay Boulevard. I give a motion to approve. Motion by Alden Covert? Can I have a second?
Second.
Alden Ravencraft, please. Alden Ravencraft?
Aye.
Alden Covert?
Aye.
Alden Bell?
Aye.
And Alden Lewis? And Alvin Lewis?
Aye.
Council Bill two zero two four dash two seven in ordinance authorizing the insurance of revenue anticipation note, state of Missouri land service line survey program into agreement not to exceed one hundred fifty-eight thousand proceeding, the form and details of the note, and authorizing certain and other actions documented in the connection therefore. That's a mouthful. Take it up with the city clerk?
I can't find the title that was written by.
The state's attorney provided for an agenda title, so that's, yeah. So there. As we previously discussed, this lead service line project, this is a two-part funding stream from Department of Natural Resources, a grant and a direct loan. The documentation for you is to approve that loan for a total not to exceed one hundred fifty-eight thousand dollars. With that, the grant amount bumps up to one hundred and two thousand five hundred dollars. These are both not to exceed on the grant and the loan portion, so if the project comes in under that amount, they'll both scale back by the same percentage, but for the purpose of this agreement tonight, it's a not to exceed amount of one hundred fifty-eight thousand dollars. It's no interest loan on this, it's simply a revenue anticipation note, so we fully intend to receive those revenues through the water utility over the remainder of the fiscal year, and we'll pay this loan back before the end of the fiscal year. This loan is what enables us to get the grant money, we're not in a financial position where we actually need the loan, but in order to get the grant money, which we do want, we are required to engage with them on the loan portion as well, so that's what we have for you. Any questions for Kyle? I apologize for you having to read that agenda title three more times tonight.
I give a motion approving Council Bill number two zero two four dash two seven, approving the note for Missouri Land Service Line Inventory Loan Program, series two zero two four.
So moved.
By Alvin Bell, have a second.
One second.
By Alvin Covert. Alvin Lewis?
Aye.
Alvin Bell?
Aye.
Alvin Covert?
Aye.
And Alvin Rayncraft?
Aye.
Orders number one four eight one in ordinance adopting the land use development code.
Okay, this is the home stretch of the land use code as stated in the previous meeting. This will be replacing chapter nine, chapter ten, and chapter eleven. Chapter ten is currently going through remodeling, and we'll come back to you when it's completed at the next meeting. So, this is the, going on for years now, so should be it.
This is the point of order, the ordinance was not amended, so as Darren just mentioned, we wanna rework chapter ten, we found some language in nine that we don't necessarily wanna cut, but we do wanna move it to ten, so I will need a motion to approve amending by striking B from this ordinance, preferably, and we'll bring you a new chapter ten at the next meeting.
So I give a motion to strike, what line was that?
Letter B, section one.
Can I give a motion to strike letter B, section one, chapter ten?
Is there a reason why we wouldn't just wait and do the whole thing at once?
I mean, I suppose you could, but we're gonna bring you an entirely new chapter ten. If I were to go and try and, I mean, you'd basically do it the same way, I suppose, you'd be repealing chapter ten and replacing with a new one. You could do it either way, I mean, amending this tonight and approving it allows us to continue to move forward with the adoption implementation of the land use code, as where if we hold it, we'll just be holding for another meeting effectively. The point being, I didn't want to strike necessary language from chapter ten, and I think that's what we're gonna end up doing if we prove it as is tonight. I don't know that we get heartburn over holding it another meeting at this point in the game, but.
It's been, what, two years, three years?
It's been a while.
Four.
We just figured it'll be a little cleaner if we break ten out and give you its own consolidated amended chapter, because we'll have to completely renumber that one, since a lot of the language will be cut as it is contradictory, but there is some stuff that needs to be fleshed out and kept. That's the, the building code section, so we don't want to hamstring Darren's ability to require permits and do building inspections on construction projects.
So this one B is currently in nine or ten?
Nine. So, as it's written right now, we would repeal nine in its entirety and replace it, we've repealed all of ten except for one specific section, but we found a few other sections that we do wanna keep. That repeals eleven in its entirety, because that's also in the new. Ten, the parts that relate to building code, they are not in the new LDC, that's why we need a new building code chapter. But then there are also a few permitting-related items that we found in nine that we do wanna keep, so we're gonna move those to ten and reconsolidate all that into a new chapter ten for building code, but again, you can either strike B tonight and pass, or you can table it, but it'll bring you a whole new, will be done by August. It won't take that long, it's just something that we caught late in the game last week when we were looking over, a side-by-side or something.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to table it.
Can I have a second to motion table? I'll start, I'm looking for it. Alvin Rayncraft?
Aye.
Alvin Covert?
Aye.
Alvin Bell?
Aye.
And Alvin Lewis?
Aye.
Motion is tabled. Orders number one four eight two in ordinance authorizing the insurance of revenue anticipation note, state Missouri Land Service Line Program Series two oh, two zero two four, staff portments.
Second reading of that, mouthful.
What was that, Mr. Mayor?
Mouthful. Can I have a motion approving, orders one four eight two? So, I'm Mr. Lewis, have a second. Alvin Covert? Alvin Rayncraft?
Aye.
Alvin Covert? Alvin Bell?
Aye.
And Alvin Lewis? Orders one four eight three, in order, authorizing the mayor to enter into the Boone County, Missouri Road and Bridge Asset Transfer Co-op Agreement.
Just a second reading for the dump truck purchase from earlier, Mr. Mayor.
I give a motion approving, orders number one four eight three, in ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a Boone County, Missouri Road and Bridge Asset Transfer Co-op. By Alvin Covert, have a second.
Aye.
By, Alvin Bell, second by Alvin Rayncraft. Alvin Lewis?
Aye.
Alvin Bell?
Aye.
Alvin Covert? Alvin Rayncraft?
Aye.
All right. Moving on to resolutions and new business, resolution two zero two four dash four eight, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an engineering service agreement with Allstate Consultants for the Caspian Circle Stormwater Improvement Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the board, before this evening, it is consideration of a proposal submitted by Allstate Consultants to proceed with the Caspian Circle Stormwater Project, we discussed this project previously on many occasions. This proposal would allow Allstate Consultants to proceed with design phase engineering along with construction phase engineering, to include assistance with obtaining bids, easements, very similar to the South Main Street project, how it was structured. This project and proposal are made possible through the receipt of two hundred and ninety thousand dollars in ARPA funds from Booth County for stormwater projects. I have Wes Bolton, stormwater engineer extraordinaire from Allstate Consultants here with us this evening, if you have any questions for him.
I do have a question, though, is this gonna fix everything on the backside of Caspian? I mean, so they don't have to have a boat to go through the backyard?
Please get that on the record, Alvin.
No vote, it can be a no-vote guarantee.
No vote guarantee, all right. Appreciate that, sir.
As it happens, that's what we're looking for.
All right, so I can have a motion approving resolution two zero two four dash four eight, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter to an engineering service agreement with Allstate Consultants for the Caspian Circle Stormwater Improvement Plan.
So moved.
By Alvin Bell, have a second. Alvin Covert, Alvin Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution two zero two four dash four nine, a resolution authorizing the mayor enter to an engineering agreement with Allstate Consultants for Oak Street Stormwater Improvement Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the board, all that same stuff I just said, but Oak Street Stormwater Project this time. No, seriously, it is almost identical, the only difference is gonna be that Oak Street already has the design complete, that's why there is a stark difference in the proposal numbers of approximately twenty thousand dollars. This proposal would include just any additional design-based services based off any changes or unanticipated discoveries, along with the bidding negotiation-based services, construction engineering, and post-construction-based services. So, again, we were very impressed with how the South Main Street project went, and we've elected to mimic that in every way possible with these two projects.
Any questions on Oak Street? I give a motion approving, resolution two zero two four dash four nine, a resolution authorizing the mayor enter to an agreement, engineering services agreement with Allstate Consultants for Oak Street Stormwater. Alvin Covert, have a second.
Second.
Alvin Bell? Alvin Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution two zero two four dash five zero, a resolution approving a request for River Regions Credit Union, which requires allowing alcohol in the park.
Resolution for you is to give consideration to allowing River Regions Credit Union to have alcohol in the park on August eighth from five, eight PM for their company. And that park board meeting, so we're not quite there with park rules, but that's what you have.
So moved.
Where are we at? Before we start. Where are we at on getting that, just put in that code?
We've got a very good draft, we'll need a park board meeting, and we didn't have form this month, so. Next month, hopefully it'll be on your docket.
Now.
So moved.
Alvin Bell, have a second.
Second.
Alvin Lewis, Alvin Favor?
Aye.
All right. Moving on to reports, the mayor's report, two things, Optimus reached out to me about the payment for the pool, do we know if that's been cut?
Or? That usually doesn't go out until.
I think it happened last year.
Well, it's been done.
Has it? Has, can you give me some kind of document, so I can?
We'll reach out to Barrett then.
Heather, yeah, she says she did.
Yeah, it was submitted last year, and then we usually don't cut it until after they close and submit their.
During the season, yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah, last time it's.
Okay, and then the last thing, I did have a gentleman approach me today about grass on South Henry Blade, approximately by the school, on the right-hand side, he's hit him up this week.
Oh. I returned his call, you left me a message.
I talked to him, he's, I'll come up this week. So, that's it. That's my report, sir. Moving on, city administrator report.
I have nothing on my report, I'll leave the thunder for Shelley.
We're in trouble.
Boys and girls.
City attorney's report.
With that advertisement, no report, I wouldn't get away at the show.
Public work director.
Same traffic, just come here. No, just a couple quick highlights.
I'm like, okay, moving right along, you boy.
Just a couple of things I wanna brief the board on, we are still on track for the Millinburg project, we completed towards the end of this month, early part of August. Unfortunately, due to some unforeseen delays, we are gonna see the Chip Seal project pushed off until late August or early September, I think that's an issue with material acquisition. We do not anticipate a lot of traffic displacement because of that project, just due to the nature of it and locations. As you're well aware, there's, MoDOT is conducting the much-anticipated East Broadway ADA Sidewalk Improvement Project, and then the tap grant project for the Liberty Lane Sidewalk is under final review, which MoDOT has assured me should go very quickly, as there were only a few comments that need to be addressed.
I see that MoDOT's doing a great job over here on Broadway.
Yeah, looking forward to seeing the outcome, I mean, we'll have ADA-compliant sidewalk from Chico Drive up to Main Street, along with additional ADA-compliant ramps in front of Helping Hands and the post office, and then the entire intersection of Main Street and East Broadway will have ADA-compliant ramps at crosswalks on all four sides.
Can we talk to them and restriping, please?
Certainly ask, but I don't think these are the people to talk to about.
Have we heard anything about restriping north or something?
As soon as we can get the strip machine, it's on the, on the to-do list.
Another project? Is that fully?
Yes.
That's another purchase for another day.
All right. Moving on to community development director's report.
Well, there are always just going on a little bit, you know, but. Wrap it up, table. I, I'll be brief, I just only have one thing, and that is for anybody interested, O'Reilly's Auto Parts is almost done, putting the shelves in and putting the inventory in, there was some snafu with the sign, that's when the sign guy showed up, they're supposed to put a monument sign out front, and so.
On the exit?
There's some wiring hanging out yet, so I told them they can't open it until that's. But they promised they'll get it done before the end of the month.
Are they putting a sign on the exit, too?
Uh, not on the exit, no, just right at the edge of their parking lot, I think, oh, there's a little brick wall there that has a pole sticking out of it, it's supposed to happen.
Pole sign.
Yep. That's it.
What is grand opening date?
I don't know, but I would guess early, early August, maybe, maybe late July.
How are we looking on housing permits and stuff?
Uh, the housing permits are up, it's quite a bit, I don't expect that to continue throughout the rest of the year, but you never know. It's one of those things, hard to predict.
All right, moving on to the thunder report.
All right.
The trailer monthly report.
So, as you all know, as we've reported in the past, we've been doing a lot of training, a lot of risk management training, that started in May, we were contacted by Missouri Employers Mutual, our risk manager there, and said, hey, AAA, MEM, and MoDOT have a contest going on, I'd like to see you guys enroll into the contest. So it is a drive safe and well contest, we had to get ten percent of our employees to buy in, which we did, you downloaded an app on your phone, and from May fifteenth until June ninth, they recorded us driving. There were weekly prizes allotted, Kyle won a prize, a three hundred dollar speaker, I got a gift card, and then the big prize was the best driver got five thousand dollars from AAA, and then the company that had the best average got a ten thousand dollar prize. So Kyle and I and Darren, representing the city, drove to Town and Country today and picked up our ten thousand dollar check. We had, overall, a best driving record out of seventy-eight companies and municipalities that participated with a ninety-seven point three average. Wow. So, check has been deposited. Just FYI. So we are going, we would like to utilize those funds to obviously make up the difference in our increase in insurance costs that we incurred this year, and then with the board's permission and the city attorney's permission.
I've checked, you're good to go, there's no legal limitation, there's no strings in the agreement with the other rules for the contest, check with Nathan, you're good to go.
So Kyle would like to do something special for the employees that participated with your permission, with some of the funds that we deposited today. So, but yes, it was very exciting, and it was, it was good deal, we asked if they were going to do it again, they weren't really sure, but I talked to Missouri Employers Mutual today after we got back, and they said that if the contest does happen again, they are willing to participate and will let us know so we can participate again. and will let us know so we can participate again.
Have we contacted the paper and put this in the paper? We'll do a press release.
Yes, and, and we're gonna hang up our check.
I've always wondered.
Is it presented? I'm sorry, do you guys have a photo from when it was presented? Not yet.
I've always wondered, surely they give you a normal check, right?
Yes.
Those are just, those are they probably?
I don't know. I think the processing machine doesn't really. Well, you know. That won't fill your face, huh?
I don't know that Chris Palmer would accept that.
That's great, that's awesome, good job, guys.
Well, I guess it doesn't have routing numbers on the bottom.
And in addition to that, we also contacted our auditors, and, and they agreed to that there were really nothing restricting us from use, but obviously we wanted to put a good use. We did have a significant increase in insurance costs this year, so we want to put a majority of it towards that.
As far as it's not paying off your next three speeding tickets, so.
No, on the way down to Town and Country to pick this up, I actually got a notification on my phone from State Farm, because I have that thing, that driveway thing on my car. My insurance has decreased by $70, so.
But I mean, I'll joke, you've come to that before, I mean, the raise for insurance, it's not even a national thing, 10%, 20% for all cities.
And, and just to kind of put this in perspective, everything that we do to participate in things like this, like MEM is aware, so when we go out this next year to bid out our insurance, these, these companies know that we're actually doing something to, to help our numbers and to help the city to improve with insurance, of course. Our audit is completed, you will all receive a digital copy. They're waiting on a letter from your law firm. I sent you an email, reference that. So as soon as Todd can get that letter to them, they're gonna send us a digital copy, and then I'll send all of you the digital copy. There were no deficiencies, so we did really good on that. We got the GFOA award for distinguished budget presentation. We will be receiving a plaque here in the next couple of weeks also with that. Our grant proposal for AEDs for this building unfortunately was refused by Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation. And after speaking with them, they said that they just received such an enormous amount of applications this year, they couldn't fulfill that, fulfill the one that we had, and they encouraged us to apply again next year. And then we completed as a group, as the city, risk management training with Curtis Anderson, Regional Vice President of First State Insurance. He's our current broker for our insurance policies here just last week, so.
You didn't volunteer for that, did you?
I did not volunteer, because I thought it was mainly for people that drove city vehicles and not our own person.
I saw that, you know, because I'm a high driver.
Drive pretty well.
I just want to point out that if Shelley's insurance thing is on her phone or an app, I was driving when she got that notification.
State Farm app, you know, you can just cheat on that.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I was driving. She was a passenger.
She wasn't reading your phone, like she was driving, is what he's saying.
Did it just report off?
It is, I'm done.
Alright, thank you. Moving on to board of aldermen.
Arun Lewis? Just wanted, we passed the stop sign tonight. Just wondering if we should revisit the other end of Liberty Lane where we had discussed in the past, that's got that blind hill to the left as you go out of the subdivision. I know it got knocked down last time because previous administration's traffic report didn't justify its number of cars, but it only takes one car to pop up over that hill, so I'd like to see what it takes to revisit that. That is Liberty Lane.
Regions.
Regions, yes. That's it.
Oh, I know where it is.
I know where it is. Is there the, where's the regions? Yes, I agree.
Arun Bell?
A couple things. I note that this is a month that we have five Tuesdays, and I've raised this before, but our next alderman meeting is on primary election day, which is a huge pain. And I've been on so many different boards, and we never meet on primary election day. And so I would propose that we either meet on the fifth Tuesday or bump it to the Wednesday. Have you already decided that yet or not?
No, it's a decision of you guys to make a motion to move it.
Morally opposed. Well, I'll make the motion now. I would vote to have it on the Tuesday before and just put that extra Tuesday. It's really on you, because if we bump it up a week, then it.
Yeah, I mean, our preference would be not necessarily to bump it the week prior. I mean, I guess it doesn't necessarily matter, but we do have quite a few things that we were hoping to work on in that extra buffer week to make sure that we're all buttoned up, that we could certainly.
And I would propose the seven, Wednesday the seventh. Because I know for sure if it's on the sixth, I can't be here.
I.
I won't be here either. Six starts second. I'll be in Indiana working.
I can be here. I could be here on the 30th. I have nothing on the 30th. It's an odd day for me. The 7th, I have court in Sedalia at 2:30. I would likely get done around 5:00, but could be here in that time. So I can make the 7th or the 30th work.
What we'll end up doing is we'll have the rescall special, and we'll cancel the standing. The standings are set by ordinance, so we just need to revisit that ordinance and change that if that's a consistent conflict. What's the availability on the 30th? You're okay?
On the 30th, you want?
I'll be gone, I'll be gone for three weeks.
Well, then we start worrying about forum.
Yeah, so maybe we're trying to be other two.
We'll, we'll figure it out, and we'll send out some thoughts and ideas.
And I guess, yeah, my preference would be to keep it at 7:00 PM on either of those two dates if it's.
Either one of those earlier?
If it's either, not on either of those two dates, I'm likely unavailable. Okay, the other thing, what?
4:15.
The other thing, and I about fired off like a mean phone call or voicemail today to Boone County, but I thought maybe we could discuss it here, because I think it does affect our citizens. But I think at some point, we need to engage Boone County, because it's really angering me by a lot, because, and I don't, I don't know whose problem this is, and I probably should, but there's no, and I, it's unsafe. There's not consistent self-service down 63. And I drive it every single day, I cannot work, I cannot hold a Zoom call. And more importantly, if I were to have an accident or had a kid who had an accident, the phone is literally on SOS right at that airport exit. And it, and it's weird, because it, before we got to airport, you used to dip out.
Did you carry?
T-Mobile.
That's why. No, no, I was second.
It's, it's got, and it's gotten worse. So you used to dip out right under, like on, south of Ashland, there used to be a dip all the time, and we just were like, yep, call you back in a couple of minutes, every single time. For whatever reason, that has completely resolved, and now it is north of us, and it's right there by that exit, and it's getting, it's getting worse. And so, and then essentially, you get past whatever that firehouse is, and, and you get inside the airport. And I raised this with Congressman Luke De Meyer earlier on the visit. You literally have SOS. You don't have anything, and their Wi-Fi is terrible. And so, I mean, it's great that we have a new terminal, but imagine, I mean, having people who come in from cities, and then you land, and you're like, where did I just land that I'm like in this, that I have SOS? And I mean, I mean, you want an Uber, you want a Lyft? You know, I frequently have to sit there, you, you ask me to get there two hours early, I lose two hours of work time, because not only does their Wi-Fi suck, but I can't even hotspot off of my phone, because my phone's on SOS. Again, your, your plane's delayed, you're waiting for a ride. It's silly, and, and I'm like, what year, what year is it? And so, I just, I mean, I think it's frustrating if you have a business. I mean, that's why I use it, I haven't had it emergency yet, but if I did, I mean, maybe I like wave a flag from my car on the side of the road. I mean, I literally, it's terrible. So I don't know how, how we fix this, whose problem is it?
There's a number of issues there, so we'll make a number of calls.
And is Amazon like draining our cell service or something?
So it was proposed, hasn't gone through yet, but a cell tower could be installed over there on Industrial Drive, specifically for T-Mobile.
Okay.
But I didn't think anybody had T-Mobile, so I didn't think.
Oh, gosh. I was a straight legacy customer.
I mean, honestly, I, I have Verizon, I don't have any issues anywhere in the county, even, even working for the county, going down Cedar Tree Lane or anywhere, never had any issues.
So who proposed the tower, and how do we like tell them this is a necessary thing?
It was in a bad spot, but they just have gotten it.
Yeah, I mean, they, the, the cell company, the cell tower company pushed it through. They knew all the checks and balances to go through, went through all the hoops, and then.
I'm gonna stop you before you say something we don't need to say. Anyways, there's a proposed cell tower from T-Mobile on Industrial Drive. We don't have any building permit or anything for it, or any communications suggest that it's gonna be built anytime soon, but there is one proposed. I've talked to T-Mobile government licensing folks, they're trying to get our business from Verizon, and we've repeatedly explained to them that you don't have a tower here, so you can have service in Ashland for T-Mobile. They do, because they have some towers north and south, but you do have a giant black hole for T-Mobile, and you get a little more centralized to Ashland. In terms of the airport stuff, I'll reach out to Mr. Parks and City.
Well, how do we fix this problem with T-Mobile? Because I'm not switching providers, and, I mean, are we?
We can try and get a status on when they anticipate a tower building up, but it's been.
Were we blocking them from putting a tower in?
No.
Was Boone County blocking them, opening a tower in? So then what?
They didn't have a permit from?
They submitted a permit application.
To us?
Yes.
And why did it not get a permit?
No, they don't have their FAA.
Yes, so it takes a while to go through FAA channels, because where they wanted to put it is kind of in the runway zone.
What about it?
Okay.
So they don't have, last we heard, they did not have that.
No, they don't have FAA.
Okay, can we follow up with them and ask them what the status is?
Certainly.
And I, I don't think they're the only service issue. I know they aren't at the airport. I know everybody's on SOS at the airport.
That's an airport issue.
Yeah.
When you're in a building, it's a different situation. Anytime you go on a metal building, it drops out.
But not on SOS. I mean, we used to go sit in that trailer at the airport, and I had service in the, in the trailer, and that's how far from that new building, right? So something needs to be done, and I don't know if we can communicate with, because the airport technically isn't ours, but.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, like I said, I'll reach out to the airport and see. I know they've talked Wi-Fi connectivity and the issues there, so I'll be curious to see what they propose and how they intend to fix that particular issue.
Okay.
Cell service, I don't know for anybody's cell provider if they can do a whole lot to boost service out there without there being a tower.
Don't think they ping up each other.
Some do, some don't. For example, why would T-Mobile build one, you may have a 10 to Verizon underwater tower, why not just?
Sorry, yeah, I, I was frustrated, but I think we can help do something about it, especially it sounds like on this tower and airport issuing. I'm happy to talk to whoever I need to, to help with the problem, because I think when you're talking about bringing businesses and residents in, and you've got more people working remotely, and we've got a lot of kids on the road for sports practices and other things, I think it matters. Okay, I'm done with my ranting, thank you.
Arun Court?
I would just like to say too, for the park board, I think we only have six members right now, which is the minimum we have to have, which is why it does make it difficult having.
It's slides you can have between X and Y numbers.
Yeah, I think we have six right now, which is the minimum we have to have. So, I'm still looking, anyone's gonna say I'm serving.
We can push that all the time, talk the books all the time.
Thanks, so we just had particular quorum issues at this last meeting.
Like we suggested, we got older enough to meet, it was just a busy time.
I don't know, because we haven't had a meeting, so, but yeah, it's hard for us to do anything, can't eat, plan the Ashland Fall Festival, like, yeah. And then just ignite this guy this weekend, on Saturday.
And parade.
Looking forward to that and parade.
They're all still on the drive and the truck with James.
Yeah.
Can he wait? 20? That doesn't work.
And if we're back on the calendar real quick, I will note that Boone County Clerk will be here at the library on Saturday, August 3rd, for those wanting to vote in Ashland on the weekend. It's really easy, it's up on their website, I think it's 10 to 3 or 10 to 4, but we might put a post out. It's really.
Usually when they share those, we share them on our page.
Okay.
And put those out.
Great, thank you.
Arun Rayantra?
Just someone came and brought to my attention that I've seen many times. There's a trailer there on Martha Croft that's, it's a camper, not attached to anything. Been there about a week, week and a half, two weeks.
Sitting on the street?
Sitting on the street.
Noted, noted.
Yep, and it's like 500 Martha Croft. Believe me, you'll see it.
It's on the curb, isn't it?
Uh, thanks, I don't know if it's on there.
Doesn't have tow vehicle?
No, it's not attached, it's not attached to anything, and it's a challenge to go down the road.
Well, especially on that curb.
Yeah, it's right on it.
You know, because there's a blind spot on the, on the right-hand side when you come around the curb like that.
Just, no one's in it, right?
I'm sorry?
No one's in it.
I don't know, I didn't go knock on the door. I wouldn't think so, I haven't seen any cords go into it or anything.
It'll be taken care of by the time you leave this way.
I live right across the street, so, don't be lying to me.
May not be moved, but I may have to take it.
Well, when I hear, when I hear a shotgun go off, I go, that works. It's like being crazy, if I have to say that to me.
Any comments from the general public, please? I see none.
General comments from the aldermen, too. I would request that that zoning ordinance be added as a new matter, presuming that the developer agrees at the next meeting. Thank you.
For the rezoning?
They'll want to fail tonight, yeah.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second, second.
And I seconded it.
He seconded.
There's a lot of seconds.
There was a lot of seconds.